April 25th, 2022, Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, folks. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Lieutenant Banish, did you start? Good evening, folks. This is April 25th meeting with Chairman Joe DiDi, Vice Chair Russ Fox, Clerk Doug Mowlin, this Carl on Zoom, no Carl tonight, and Chief Administrative Assistant Robin Solak. All right, so first up at 6 o'clock is public comment. Should anyone have something they would like to say, please state their name and address for the record.
Inga Hoteling 45 Klein Road. I've got two things I'd like to ask. I contacted the, I contacted the show last week to see if you all have a list of your acronyms.
I don't even say half of them right, as you know.
No, we don't. And I came previously from an acronym company, Mobile Oil. We actually had a Bible that had them. My question to the board would be, would it be an inconvenience to, after, say, SFD, you would simply put down Southwick Fire Department? Just so that people that might be zooming in or people who are attending will know what some of those acronyms are. And hopefully, after a few months, we won't have to do that any longer. But I know for me, it would help because I find myself having to Google or try and figure it out or ask somebody else what it might be. So that was just a question I'd like to know. Is it in the meetings? You can just put what the definition is. So that's my first comment. Second one is, I've been attending the Economic Development Committee Commission meetings, and I've been to a couple of them now. And what I'm finding to be disturbing is that the departments don't seem to communicate about what's happening in the town. And the way that I would look at an economic development committee would be that any businesses that are knocking on our door could use them as the conduit as to what needs to be done within our community for them to put through an application. So I'd like to know from the board, how do you look at the value of this commission? And what do you see they could do to enhance their role within the community as well? So those are my two comments tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Emerald, 132 Randall Road. One comment I want to make is I have that the CPC did not give you the money for the roof because I think that could cause some problems when I went to Boston. But that's got to be a special revenue fund, and they're very, very, very specific on uses of special revenue funds. And this is a beautiful building. Don't get me wrong, but it is restored to modern time. And the historical preservation is like the cigar factory or the Josiah Day House in West Springfield where it's the period. And when they come down on you, they're very public and they make it like a fool. So it's kind of a good thing that we give into that. And the other thing is Ronald, Ronald D.
What does that have to do with anything?
Last meeting I had.
He is an electrical inspector, part-time for the town that gets paid by the inspection, who is also my son. Is that a problem?
Well, no, it's just a fact.
Yeah, it is a fact.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank God that we don't have the state make a fool of us, right? Like you said.
What?
Thank God we don't have the state make a fool of us, like you said.
Well, I'm.
Yeah, I'm glad you're worried.
Seventy-five years.
Yeah.
And instead of contacting your council, you should have contacted either your contact gap or your auditor should have known what you kind of can't do with that. Because if you do it wrong, you have to pay it back and make it public. It didn't have to happen, but it's already happened in other places.
Well, thank you. Anyone else for public? Yes, Kim.
Fandale, 5 Klein Road. I had previously prepared a couple of comments for tonight, but I'll just wrap those. After I listened to a Westfield Community Programming Channel broadcast from April 20th with the Chair of Southwick Select Board hosting it, I didn't even know where to begin this conference. This public multi-community broadcast was in Ferris. I was embarrassed with the town of Southwick, for the other town officials of Southwick, and for myself, because I voted for each member. Having attended every single Select Board meeting of the last third of this board is ever prepared and more importantly, actually ever informed. Last year, I've given you every benefit of the doubt and even defended this board at times, hoping that you would redeem yourselves and show some basic professionalism, knowledge, respect, and simply some courtesy to the rest of town government, never mind the town residents. Early in this broadcast, the Chair of the Select Board publicly mocked private citizen again, accused the police department of bamboozling you, and I'm quoting a lot here. Bamboozling you to voting to allow them to drone. And with regards to that conversation, also accused either town employees, officials, or the public of having furtive secretive motives for drones, stating, quote, "Part of my town wants to be snoopy." Through shame on other departments and predecessors for many lack of maintenance and potentially humiliating a recently hired town employee by publicly discussing that person's affirmation from private to public affairs. This chair's discussion regarding the current town budget was incoherent, quoting a lot. You don't even want to know about the shortfall. We're fine. It's not mean. We're tight with our money. We make it last. All of that in the same run-on sentence. Then swiftly moved to cast blame on CPC because, quote, "Unfortunately, CPC voted the other night not to help us with new roof." And long story short, they didn't fund it. So that's 12 to 13 cents more on the tax base just for the roof. So are we fine? Have we made our money last? Then why the big sense of crisis over the last year and a half over the budget? Are we hoarding cash? Free cash is currently reported by the Finance Committee at 4.23 million, up from 2.9 million this week last year. Surely, we can appropriate some cash for maintenance of the roof there. And by the way, the Vice Chair of FinPom's longtime member, Mr. Taryn Mish, whom the Chair couldn't remember during his broadcast. During this past summer and fall, this board also lambasted its public constituents and deliberate misinformation on a number of controversial topics. The hypocrisy of this board was glaring during this public broadcast on April 20th in a discussion of the warrants for town meeting, starting off with, oh, there's one article in regards to them. And changing how big commercial, 50,000 square feet, I think, and bigger, coming to town. There is further battle about the master plan process and having to go to town and vote. And then, yeah, it was just because 12 or 15 people on the unpack think that's the way to go. It's not the whole town, you know? And I don't know, there's some verbiage in there coming up to maybe stunt the growth of Southwick until the master plan is done. Fact. There is absolutely no verbiage in it to stunt the growth of Southwick. When was that ever the intent? Hope that you will correct those statements of misinformation publicly, as is required in the town's social media policy, now that you've been made aware of it. Also, that poor planning board is a group of elected officials who worked together, together for months with active citizen participation and an extensive public hearing to come to the product and process to better evaluate larger-scale projects for this town. And they voted unanimously to endorse it for a warrant article in a town vote. I know that one of you has actively participated in many of those planning board meetings. I wonder if the other two have actually read that proposed bylaw. When I heard this statement, it was a slap-my-head moment. And I said to myself, how the heck would I vote on this when he has no idea what it is? And then I remembered that this is what happens every week at the Select Board meetings. Listfully ignorant votes on topics, big and small, where certain members clearly have no idea what they are voting on. They partake in little to no discussion and only rarely a brief debate, and generally with only Mr. Steinhardt prodding the vote with a scant and ad hoc explanation. That entire diatribe on the proposed bylaw was either a deliberate attempt to completely misrepresent it, a show of uninformed, uninvolved ignorance, a blatant dismissal and disregard for a warrant article that wasn't put there by this board's desire, or sadly, a total lack of comprehensive reading skills by the speaker. Circling back to my opening remarks, the broadcast was embarrassing. This board and its chairperson are embarrassing. I am embarrassed for myself yet that I voted for each of these members and said that every opportunity for redemption, you failed me and this community. I do know the other candidates' names, where this uninformed incumbent does not. And I look forward to the public correction of misinformation on that bylaw. Please inform me when and where. I'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you. 6:15. All right. So up first at 6:05 is Gabe Fuller.
Yeah.
Hi, come on up.
Hi. My name is Gabriel Beiler, and I'm with the Pioneer Value Planning Commission. I'm working closely with Carl Steinhardt and Erica Johnson. And I'm here today because I took the fourth motion to approve the program and budget amendment for the FY19. This is a CBG grant. There is a re allocation of $152,000 of unsecured FY19 funding. And it's for the purpose, it's to purchase a new service bus for the senior center and to also help with the design of the elevator in Town Hall. So I'm putting forth a, an assignment sheet. But I am putting forth a motion because that's what we're doing.
Okay, you want to pass that sign-in to the lines? Thank you. So you have the motion? You had to say.
I would just create the, we added it to the agenda.
I don't have the motion. So I didn't see it in the email this afternoon. It was just a copy of the sign-in sheet that was in our email at 4:30.
Hey, we can kind of go from memory on how the motion is made.
Okay.
Okay, we can try to do that. I know that Carl and I met with you.
Yeah.
And I forget the name of the other gentleman.
John Leary.
Okay. So I believe the motion is basically authorizing the Chair to sign an agreement that would entail changing the monies left over from the fiscal 19 CBG project, which has been concluded.
Yep.
And that they, we would be taking those funds to address the elevator of the town of Southwick in the consolidated building, Town Hall, and also looking at the purchasing of a vehicle for the senior center, Town of Southwick. I think that'll probably cover it, Gabe. If not, we can always revote it next week. Formal motion. Is there a second?
A picture of said vehicle. I remember seeing that. I don't see the actual one. So. Can you repeat the motion, Mr. Vice?
The motion would be to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign any documents involving the redistribution of leftover funds from the fiscal 19 CBG grant that was for bungalow and housing. Those projects have been concluded. So this is the leftover money that we would be transferring to address the issue of the elevator at Town Hall in Southwick and also the purchase of a vehicle for the Southwick Senior Center.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I, Russ Fox, I, Doug Mowlin, I. Do you have your signature paper back? Sign it to the other sign-in. Yeah, yeah. Next at 6:10, hearing Walk on the Water, a DBA Lake Life 101. Need a motion to open the hearing?
Russ Fox will make that move.
Doug Mowlin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Okay, so meeting has been opened. How are you seeing me?
Great, how are you?
So just the name change.
Just the name change. Corporation staying the same.
Yeah, everything's the same. So she's here because she's changing the name, folks, from on the water to 101. Lake Life 101, yeah. Okay. Anyone here in favor of the name and address change, or actually just the name change?
I think, Chairman, they'd have to state their name and address.
Sure.
Inga Hoteling 45 Klein Road, yes.
New Emerald, 132 Randall Road, yes.
Is anyone here against the name? Wait, I'm sorry. Is anyone here against the name change? General discussion. Sure.
For me, it's the same change.
All right. I need a motion to close the hearing.
Russ Fox will make the motion, close the hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Okay.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the name change.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
You're all set. Thank you so much. Thank you. At 6:15, for Councilor appointment, Pauline Thomas. It's Pauline here.
Thanks, here. I had the pleasure of talking with her at the art show. I talked to her a couple of weeks previous at the, it was before a planning board meeting. She was meeting with Sue Chance.
Okay.
Pleasure of the board.
Yeah. Your thoughts, Mr. Fox?
I think that she's the only applicant. We've posted it. It's been publicized. Council has made a recommendation, so I have no problem with making a motion to approve her cultural council.
I'll second the motion with the note that a cultural council can be comprised of not less than five nor more than 22 members.
This is Fire Department Ian Hurley to be appointed as a Call Force paramedic firefighter.
I believe the chief is in Utah, Ohio, so I don't, and I believe our deputy chief is still on a medical issue.
Yeah.
I did read through the application. Seems like a fine individual.
It's a call force, so.
Right. Correct. So I'd gladly make the recommendation to appoint based on what we usually say, yada, 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 which is the physical, background checks, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second the motion for, to appoint Ian Hurley as a Call Force paramedic firefighter.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Southwood Fire Department Junior firefighter. An appointment.
This is the junior fire.
Yep.
And it looks like this is the first applicant, and we're going to be working with the town of Southfield, Connecticut because we're just beginning this program, and Fire Department's beginning this program.
Correct.
I think that's great that we have a young lady here in town that's eager to become part of this new program. Looks like she's in high school at the time.
Yeah.
And I would gladly make the motion to make her our first appointee to this program.
I'll gladly second this motion.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
American Legion Invitational Memorial Day Parade and. So it's at the meeting at 9:30 in the parking lot across from the Summer House. Parade will proceed at 10:00 a.m. Freshman's after at the American Legion, it looks like. I believe that it's raining, is everything's at the American Legion if it's.
We always offer this room, and this room is always prepared in case someone had the ceremony here. And we could probably send that to the commander, Darcy Rock, and make sure that she's aware that this room is always prepared in case, in climate weather.
It's going to be on May 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade permit going forward to the state.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Discuss and set revised base rate hourly wage for seasonal temporary floater and hard-time board secretary classification.
Yeah.
It's just a discussion.
Oh, discussion. Okay.
I'd make a motion to table this.
Yeah, that I know Carl's thinking for a way.
Right, right. And we can digest and talk to Labor Council first before we have a discussion as a personal.
So I'll table that.
Is it, oh, is it a new motion for that?
Yeah, second. All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Accepts Southwood Police Department donation, the amount of 250 from Republican Town Committee for the sale of support the police signs.
And that money is earmarked for the RAT program. I'll make that motion.
Doug Mowlin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DiDi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowlin, I.
Okay, appointment of Anthony Malone and Mr. Hannah.
Rose Hannah.
Rose Hannah, I'm sorry, to the Southwood Police Traffic Control Offers Classification and Transfer. And transfer Kevin Bishop from reserve officer to traffic control officer. Folks are here, I think.
Yes, and Lieutenant Banish is here representing them, I believe.
Lieutenant, what's the game plan with this? Come on up.
The game plan is basically Summers Public Committee, but you know that. So we've got to get our troops in order. And this is obviously the next logical step here.
Yeah.
So we present our first two test candidates as well, in addition to former Chief Bishop. So we can hopefully get a role. Chief Bishop will be able to get on the road tomorrow.
Yeah.
These two are going to have to go through a physical seat ground purchase by recertification as well. So once they get those things out of the way, we'll be ready to go. See for it from there. We don't want, obviously, to get too many people on board to begin with, just not knowing how they're going to play out.
Understood. Any questions for the chairman?
I know that both. I know Ms. Hannah and Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
And the former chief, I think I know him too.
Mr. Fox?
I think it probably should be pointed out, these are both.
Introduce them, the two that were in that room.
Yeah, both former police officers.
Yes, we've got Anthony Malone, who served a number of years over at Taggall.
Yes.
So that Rose Hannah, who served and had the head plate brush back in the day. She also served years where it was. Chelsea served years of reserve officer for a period of time. That's why it's highly qualified.
Yeah. Wonderful. Well, thanks for thinking of Southwood. For your motion.
I will gladly make the motion. I think we got two great candidates there, so gladly make a motion based again on all the yada, yada, yada.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Accept Southwood Police Department hard time dispatcher resignation of Jason Kenner.
I'll have to make that motion.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Thank you. All right. This is a one day liquor license for the Lions Club at the rec center. Looks like it's going to be May fifteenth from noon to five. Open for about seventy-five people. Is the, oh, torn bowl tournament, wonderful. Yeah. Any questions?
No, sir.
Oh, it's fine. Do you want to make that motion?
I will make a motion for that one day liquor license.
I will second that motion. Every year, waving the officer. Is there a form for that?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's already on there.
Right. So all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Doug Mogan, I.
Russ Fox, I, stand, a board member of the rec center.
Okay, COA Senior Center Volunteer Luncheon is five twenty-five, twenty-two at noon time. In case you guys have moved to Tucker's. If you guys are going to RSVP by May seventeenth. Add it to the list. Is the reserve fund transfer of five thousand for tax title operation.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
This is to recruit monies for back taxes. Six cases have been paid up, and it looks like there's just a few left. So under new business, I think of the chairman. That was this. Yeah, I just have one thing here. It's an email from the fire chief in regards to graduation. Last, yeah, that's twenty-seven, we'll be on Friday, May twentieth at eleven AM at the fire academy in Springfield. So if you guys want to attend, let the chief know. Then when new business, they have Southwood Housing Authority vacancy process. Beth Malone has stepped down, it appears. So do we appoint to that position?
Hey, I think town council is involved, the state's involved. It appears that the rules are changing in that they're going to be reducing the number of elected people, and there will be there will be an appointment of a tenant to that board.
Yeah.
So I think this has come at the, an opportune time, because this has been in the works now for three to four years, and they're finally getting to the point where they're going to implement it, so. Beth Malone was a longtime member. She's moved out of town, so I'd like to thank her for her service to the town. But this, this, I think, works in our favor, because we'll be able to just leave that vacant, as I understand it, we can get clarification from the state or town council.
Yeah.
And just let them recommend a candidate, and then we'll find out whether the housing authority appoints that person or we appoint that person. I'm not sure.
Okay.
There will be a tenant.
Anything for new business, Mr. Fox?
Well, it looks like we've got a letter here from the Rotary that they have their summer concert series, and we've always, I think, donated out of our gift account a hundred dollars, so I'd make that a formal motion. Is that well attended series, I think it brings a lot of activity on Wednesday nights of Town of Southwood.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
They go to every scenario in that tenant thing, et cetera, it's really because of how the dates go.
For new business?
Uh, no. New business, sure. Okay. Old business, I have North Pond violation, ready for fish and game agreement development. Town hall roof design. We did get some information on that, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've got the figures from Russo Bar.
We did.
And it looks like we'll be looking for a bonding issue going to the town meeting, annual town meeting of two million, six hundred sixty-three thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars, which would address the roof and the HVAC for this building. So I would make that a formal motion that that be the bonding request
The number.
for the annual town meeting for that project. Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
I'm excited if we can just get scratched off because I'm preparing.
Right, and Carl may have funds towards that, so don't worry about that.
Right, and there, and we could, they're still reviewing different bids.
Yes.
And there might be a qualified lower bidder.
Right.
But we can always amend that on the town meeting floor, so.
CPC funding application, we're all settled with that. Sewer system, I am in the city of Westfield, that's ongoing. We're in committee procedure to notify, appoint members of the process. That's ongoing, right, that process is.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I have one more piece to do on that, we're done.
Deputy Fire Chief recruitment process, I thought we're going to change that to deputy, what deputy does, I'm sorry. So that's ongoing. Job description for assistant CAO position. Did you get those revisions correct?
Yes.
Revised STM and ATM articles. Fund issues. ARPA funds. Utilization of and FY twenty-three budget items. Vote to adopt warrants and town budget FY twenty-three. Is that what we have here in front of us? Those are just the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I worked with Laura
Yep.
on Monday. Excuse me, Friday, but and we, we kind of finalized the special town meeting and then sent that to Turncoil, who felt that that was in good order. There are still questions about the annual town meeting, but now that we have the bonding figure for this project, for the Town Hall, I think there's a few other questions, you know, concerning, I think, the cell tower.
Piece of it.
Piece of it.
Yep.
And they're working out with Bernie Pigling. So other than that, I think that the articles are going to be finalized, and then we'll go to channel fifteen to have the review of the articles, so that people can go and watch channel fifteen and be prepared, or have some additional information, because a couple of the articles, the, from the planning board, are quite lengthy, quite lengthy.
They are.
For people to read through at a, at a town meeting, so this will give people an opportunity to have some background information on those articles.
Review petition from council for one four one condom on road Krabby Joes for parking easement or license. I did meet up with the gentleman last week to go over his scenario over there for the spaces, and we agreed at fifteen hundred dollars a year for license agreement. I think we can go up to three years with that. I'd like this board to at least prove two years. I know two wouldn't be a problem. I don't know about three personally.
Yeah.
So the gentleman can get the ball rolling over there and actually get it running before we worry too much about dollars.
Okay.
That's where I was at with him. I think I'm just looking for a motion to move forward with the attorney to get that process going.
I'll make that motion, because I don't want to see that building sitting vacant any longer.
I'll second the motion, subject to town council's approval of the whole smash, right?
Correct.
Two-year deal.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Discuss Concom CPC coordinator position appointment. Sabrina Poole. I'm all set. I read everything that you tweeted on vacation the week before. I have to reach out to town council, get some opinions on a few things.
I, I think the, you know, we had one applicant that made it here and that didn't withdraw, but she did go through the full process.
Yep.
Um, I think there's going to be a learning curve any, any position. It's a very difficult role. It is a one-year probationary position.
Yep.
You know, and I, I would that we could make sure that the CAO and everybody is working with the person to make sure they're acclimated to the role correctly, and if there's any questions that they know they have a person to reach out to.
Yeah.
So with that, I'd make the motion to offer the position to
Sabrina.
Sabrina Poole. Based on, again, all the yada, yada, yadas, which are physicals, background checks, et cetera. And she's online?
Yep, she's in your operating corner.
Okay.
Wonderful.
She's waving.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Just reach out Sabrina to Carl tomorrow, if he's in, and he'll get you going with the paperwork. Thank you. Thank for being patient.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else on their old business?
I had one thing. We did our annual inspection of our school buildings that the town of Southwood leases to the region. Took with me the building inspector and our buildings and grounds person. Which is turning out to be very good, because David has already reached out to Eric.
They have, yeah.
And they've developed a relationship. They've had some give and take back and forth on different things that the school does to their buildings and what we do with our buildings, and I think it's very positive that they have this relationship building. Bottom line is, school buildings are in excellent shape, but, I mean, it is the difference of night and day. Town of Southwood citizens voted for dead exclusion, and we spent, I believe, sixty-two million dollars that we're going to be paying for for another fifteen years or so. But they, they have met the agreement that we had with them. We do the annual inspection. In each year that we go over there, the buildings are in better shape, so they're, they're well maintained, and Eric is, is working on the HVAC. This year, if the voters approve it, they're going to do the HVAC at Woodland School. So that means that all our systems are going to be headed in the right direction. Just conserve energy and provide clean, fresh air for both students and staff. It was very good to see the buildings in good shape and the grounds in good shape.
Mogan, anything for old business?
No, sir.
All right, we have to go back to our first page, though. I forgot to acknowledge payable warrant two 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 four D dated four twenty twenty-two, the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and seven cents. Acknowledged payroll warrant two 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 four dated four twelve twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. I also need a motion for open session minutes dated four eleven twenty-two.
Russ Fox will make that move.
A motion to table, Mr. Fox, till next week. I had some changes I wanted to back.
All right.
And then I have the select board budget FY twenty-three work session minutes dated four six twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Have we covered everything?
We have an exact session, can I?
No, exactly. Is it?
Yeah.
All right, need a motion to adjourn.
Russ Fox will make the motion to adjourn.
Doug Mogan will second the motion.
In favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogan, I.
Thank you, folks. Have a wonderful evening.